Good evening. Welcome to our October 4th, 2022 City Council meeting. It's 7:00 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Antonio Rodriguez from Calvary Chapel, New Beginnings West Covina. And Councilman Tabatabai will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
God, our Father, and the Lord Jesus Christ, we thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. We thank you for allowing us to live in this time in human history. We thank you for the city council that you've appointed, this legislative body who's responsible for the policies and direction for this great city of West Covina. We thank you for the wisdom and the knowledge that you impart upon your people. Our intellect, our hearts, our spirit, our strength, our talents, and our gifts have all been given to us by your sovereign will. We know that everything exists because of you, and everything that has been created and was created to bring you glory and honor. We thank you again for the men and the women you've placed to serve and direct the city for such a time as this, most notably Mayor Dario Castellanos, Mayor Protem Rosario Diaz, Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado, Councilman Tony Wu, and Councilmember Brian Tabatabai. I humbly ask that you, Lord, impart your knowledge, your understanding, your wisdom upon them in order that the city council meeting can effectively respond to the issues at hand. You know, tonight they're going to consider the acceptance of the energy system upgrades installation. They're going to consider the final parcel map number 72097. They're going to consider ordinance number 2501 and the memorandum of understanding between the city and the City of West Covina's Firefighters Association. And I pray all these decisions, Lord, made today will be fruitful and beneficial for all. Help us, Lord, to be united for the common good of the city. Help us to see from your perspective and not our own with the supernatural wisdom from heaven. Help us to pray and support our leaders in this city, rendering honor to whom honor is due. And lastly, Lord, help us to be the leaders that bring you glory and honor. And in closing, Lord, I thank you, heavenly Father, and the Lord Jesus, for giving us your ear to humbly, to hear this humble request as you direct us all. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Would you all face the flag? Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Present.
Councilman Wu?
Yep.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Here.
Mayor Castellanos?
Here. Thank you. And closed session was canceled today, so we have nothing to report out of closed session. We'll jump right into our presentations. The first one is for National Fire Prevention Week proclamation. So I'd like to invite Assistant Chief Jim Rodruff to the front, please, to the podium. This year is the 100th anniversary of Fire Prevention Week, and the 2022 fire prevention theme for this period is "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape." Welcome, Chief. Assistant Chief?
Thank you.
Microphone's yours.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, for your support. We do all the fire safety presentations for the city and keep everybody safe. As the mayor mentioned, this is the 100th year that the National Fire Protection Association --
Oh, here, here we go.
-- that the National Fire Protection Association and firefighters have been doing fire safety awareness training. And the slogan and theme for this year is, of course, "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape." So I think that's where I get a chance to tell you all that your exits are here, here, and here. Fires move fast. That's the theme for this year, is that new building materials that they use in residential and commercial construction allow the fires to grow exponentially fast and can trap individuals. For years, we've been teaching about fire smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, and it's critical that the public react when they do hear those alarms. And that's why the National Fire Protection Association has chosen that slogan for this
So I'd like to invite Erica Taylor to the front, please.
year. Fire won't wait. Plan your escape. You need to know your exits before it's time to use them.
And microphone is right there for you.
We had a wonderful open house this last weekend at Fire Station 2. It was a kickoff to our Fire Prevention Week. We had a lot of citizens and council members attend.
I'm Erica Taylor. I am the crime analyst over at West Covina PD.
We always welcome the families, of course, and any opportunity that we might have to
And for the last few years, I have been leading up the charge on breast cancer awareness
get into the schools and teach the fire safety awareness message.
as part of the Pink Patch Program. Pink Patch Program, if you're not aware, started probably about 2013 in Irvine, I believe
Thank you very much for this proclamation.
Yes.
it was. Several agencies at that point had gotten to turn their patches pink. So a lot of people were wearing the pink patch and buying the pink patch. Buying that patch is funding for breast cancer awareness. So here at West Covina, I don't know how I'm going to do this now, we have our pink patches, and our pink patches are $10. Because I got pockets. We have some nice little pink patch bottle openers that are commemorative that are $15. And we currently have t-shirts that we are selling, unisex t-shirts, women's t-shirts, long-sleeved t-shirts, hoodies. You can find a link to buy those t-shirts on the West Covina Police Facebook page and the Instagram page. Again, Breast Cancer Awareness Month is not just for women, it's for men, too. They don't get talked about a lot, but men get breast cancer just as well as the women get breast cancer. So we're taking whatever we can to raise funds, to send the money to City Hope for the breast cancer research. So please, please help us out with that.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Diane Franklin to the front, please. Domestic Violence Awareness Month was launched nationwide in October 1987 as a way to connect and unite individuals and organizations working on domestic violence issues while raising awareness for those issues. Ms. Franklin from the Police Department is here this evening to accept the proclamation and say a few words. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I am so honored to be here with you, and I want you to know how amazing West Covina Police Department is. And I was hired in 1999 as the victim's advocate primarily for victims of domestic violence. We have an outstanding program that follow each victim that want to participate through the criminal justice system, through the civil justice system, and through the family justice system. We help with relocation, we help with shelter, counseling, support groups, in all manners. And we interact with our local domestic violence shelters. Our program is really, really outstanding. As far as I know, there's only one other police station in San Gabriel Valley with their own victim's advocate. And I'm on a call 24 hours a day, and I work with some wonderful men and women that really care about making families safe and lovable. Thank you.
Assistant City Clerk, how many speaker cards do we have?
I have three speaker cards this evening, Mayor. Our first speaker is Lisa Mayo, followed by Terry Peredez, sorry about that, and George Ogden. Yeah? Come to the front.
Just one request, Lisa. I left the other mic down there. Could you pass it to our Assistant City Clerk, please?
Sir, I can.
Thank you.
You're the boss.
Thank you.
Well, it's good to be here. Mayor Castellanos, did I say that correctly?
You got it.
Okay. And all the Mayor Protem Diaz and Lopez Viado, maybe, Councilman Brian, I'm not going to pronounce her name, it gets hard, and of course, Tony. I came here today to talk to you about domestic violence, but it is to tell you about this film that we'll be showing over at, and I gave you all a flyer, and it does come with free popcorn. Yeah, I know that, I figured that would be an incentive. The film, obviously, since I have a nonprofit organization called They Will Know, which teaches against domestic violence, so I just brought this over so that maybe one of you could come and see the film, and it's won four awards already. But that's not the point. The most, to me, my passion is to bring the message out. And at D-VAC, which is Domestic Violence Action Coalition, that is where Diane, as a matter of fact, I met her, where a lot of the other nonprofits that are helping the mothers and the children get together. So there's a lot of nonprofit organizations that are there. And so it is just a matter of us getting together. And so I just wanted to extend my hand and hope that you come and see it or bring awareness, and that's basically it. And I thank you for your support, because you have been supporting me through the years. And I love being a judge for the student films, and I was kind of a little bit heartbroken that the films were not shown here for the kids. You know, kids are our future, and we have to recognize them in the littlest of things that they do, so that they can also see how special they are and what kind of changes they're going to make to our world. So if we are able to see a little bit of them, I, I think, I know that the kids are grown up in blah, 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 but let me tell you, one of the kids that worked in my first music video, he didn't have any money. He came from a divorced mother. They were running away from a domestic violence situation, and he was in my music video. He graduated from USC Film School through donations and grants that he got that I had to help him, one way or the other. So I know that I speak with my passion, and I hope that you can see that, Mayor Castellanos, that you can bring that awareness also for the kids, so that they can also inspire other children as well to continue in their passion. Wasn't that dramatic? I like that. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Terry Peredez, followed by George Ogden?
My name is Terry Peredez, and I am an engineer paramedic with our fire department, and I serve as the president of the West Covina Firefighters Local 3226. Tonight, I am here to speak on behalf of our local in expressing our gratitude. See, in my young career, I have experienced quite the ups and downs from being hired on a safer grant with only two years of guaranteed employment, facing retaliation and threats from previous leadership, operating outdated apparatus and equipment, to working under a long-expired MOU. And by outdated, I don't mean a few weeks or months, I mean a couple of years. However, for the past few years, under our current council, staff, and our fire management, we have seen a drastic improvement to the operation of the fire department and subsequently the morale of its members. Steps have been taken to improve this said failing fire department infrastructure and apparatus. For example, Fire Station 4 had its severely cracked and broken pavement in the back of the apparatus bay redone entirely, dated and inoperable kitchen cabinets that were replaced, and a sense of pride restored at the station with new paint applied both interior and exterior. Station 2 with very similar improvements, along with a repaired roof that had been leaking into the apparatus bay for over a year. Climate events that were installed to allow for the diesel exhaust to flow and escape from inside of the apparatus bay and limiting the contaminants that firefighters were exposed to, not only in their PPE, but when they're getting in and out of the rig. We also do a lot of work in our apparatus bay, and it was quite a hazard. We now know this is a large contributor to cancer in firefighters. Some of you also may have noticed that Fire Station 1 has been vacated after years of seismic reports condemning the building as entirely unsafe in the event of an earthquake. Crews now reside temporarily in a modular in the back of city yard as the city works to replace Fire Station 1 on a permanent basis. Lastly, but not least, tonight the council will have an opportunity to vote to ratify in a successor agreement between the Firefighters Association and the City of West Covina. This contract will continue its department's efforts to improve, or, I'm sorry, efforts to be competitive in wage and benefits with the surrounding area while improving recruitment and retention, but will also help the city in recovering pension obligation responsibility and reducing overtime. While we may not always see eye to eye on every issue, we are very appreciative that this current council and staff have given us an opportunity to have a voice and a seat at the table. We look forward to continue our commitment to the City of West Covina and its citizens in serving with pride, integrity, and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Evening, members of city council, staff, and the fire department, and firemen paramedics, and women paramedics. Basically, I'm here tonight to talk about some of the things that have occurred here in the city of West Covina over the last couple of years. One of the things I'm going to direct my attention to is code enforcement and some of the things that have been occurring with them. Some of you may be aware that they've been criticized over the internet. People have actually come to me about certain situations. Now, when we had some of the money that became available, one of the council members, moving in a direction of being positive, requested that we hire 10 new police officers and also 10, bring back 10 people that had been on, the what? Copy? That were laid off? Hired back 10 employees, yeah. And then also to improve the code enforcement issues in the city of West Covina, they went to 10 people. This city has had code enforcement officers in the past. We've never had that many. I think this city, you know, for its size, has more than any other city in comparison. However, I made a dumb joke that the enemy of the people. Well, that got coined because I said it in front of other people. I should have never said that. But what has happened is some people have taken light of that. And a couple of incidents that have taken place, a code enforcement officer stopped off at a lady's house, she's 83 years old. She had a roof damage. Her sons came over, they finally were able to get a weekend off of work to repair it. They found there was more damage than they thought. So they started restructuring the front. Granted, they did it without a permit. The code enforcement officer immediately stopped the repairs, and she was forced to spend $380 of money she didn't have to get a permit to go ahead and complete this job. And now, she's an 83-year-old woman that was married to somebody that was an employee here for 30 years, Don Almer. He's a combat veteran, okay? And he put his time in here, and he's helped other people. The code enforcement officers have also ticketed people to tune of $40 of whack for their trashcans being out. There's a 97-year-old veteran up on the high side of the city of West Covina that has trouble getting to the curb to get his trashcan in a timely manner. The other person that got ticketed, the only thing I know about him is that he was gone for the entire period, for that entire week, and he got a ticket with picture in the mail for $40. Now, getting back to this 83-year-old woman, and you're acquainted with her, I'm sure, and that's Elsie Almer. She's a president of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and I think you've met her more than once yourself. And she's in a wheelchair now because she fell getting out of her car, and she broke her neck or crushed a vertebrae in her neck. She's been in a wheelchair for two years, so it's difficult for her to get things going. But one of the things that we used to have here as a redevelopment agency that would go out and help our community and our residents, we no longer have that because it was taken away by the higher-ups. But I would like to see a mechanism put in place for these people that are having hardships financially where we could actually help them out in some way. $380 may not seem like a lot of money to you and me and to many people, but it is a lot of money to this lady. We pay to get her to come to the VFW for her meetings. That's $125 for an ambulance. I've had the VFW pay, the auxiliary is paid, I've done it out of pocket because I've known this lady for 35 years. And what we did in the old days are police officers, they would stop if they saw trashcans out there, they knew some of the people that lived there, they would take the trashcans in. And it's also a welfare check. They'd do a door knock, because that telegraphs that there may be something wrong in the house. I don't see why our code enforcement officers can't get out of the car and help our citizens and do a door knock and explain to them that we can't have these trashcans out there. But is there something we can do to help you? Maybe we can contact your neighbors, and your neighbors could bring the trashcan in for you instead of giving a $40 citation to somebody that's unlimited funds to begin with. I think that would be a big plus for our city. I think you'd get a lot of accolades for it. And I don't know, I'm just looking at it, if everybody left their trashcan out, we'd have our deficit paid off real quick here, now wouldn't we? But, but, but if, if you would like to take a look at that, I would appreciate it, and if I could hear from you, you could probably notify the city manager. I bet you he might even talk to me about what we might be able to do in the future, and I'd be happy to work with you on this. No, I'm not taking in everybody's trashcan. But thank you very much for listening to me, and I'm surprised somebody's not here tonight. I was looking forward to sitting next to him.
Thank you, George. Regarding the trashcans, Athens already offers that service free of charge.
Who?
Athens Services, our trash hauler.
Really? Well, we need to get that message out a little bit further, I believe. And however, you know, I can put that in the newspaper if you want me to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, get that information to me.
We'll request details.
I can actually put your city manager to work for a change and have him get that information to me.
My understanding is that it, we'll verify with Athens, but my understanding is that it's free of charge for seniors who need the service or anyone who has a medical necessity for that. We'll get the information to you.
I appreciate that. And if you would, I know I'm going over time here, I'm, thank you for stopping in two seconds.
I thought you were done.
How long I can talk longer. Okay, but if you could also look into maybe a mechanism for these people that have to get, get a permit or something like that, that is not affordable to them, because that's going to hold people back from repairs that they need to their home or whatever it might need, I'd appreciate that, too. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And the rest of the council.
I have no further speaker cards.
Good evening. I'll cover three issues tonight. Issue one, the Gates Foundation this month said it will invest $200 million in digital ID projects encompassing digital project, public infrastructure, including civil registry databases and digital ID to help meet the 2030 target for reaching the UN's sustainable goals. The $200 million in new funding is part of an overall $1.27 billion committed by the foundation to support global health and development projects is closely tied to Goal 16.9 of the UN goals for which digital ID programs are supposedly needed. Reclaim the Net reported the funds added to several existing Gates-supported global digital ID initiatives, even as such initiatives come under fire for violating people's right to privacy. Digital surveillance is the real motive behind the push to vaccinate kids. The move to digital ID and digital bank accounts is a move to a system of top-down total tyranny, including cash, money, health, everything. Turning back to medical, the vaccine cult still wants to call experimental gene therapy FDA-approved and safe, but it's unsafe and ineffective. The cure is unsafe, and everyone is beginning to know it. Beware the winter flu season because the feds are playing with data and mortality numbers to trick the public. So getting back to the digital cashless economy and having not one paper dollar in your pocket, you can't buy chewing gum at the store without government permission. You know, ask the people that, the Canadians that tried to contribute to the Canadian Truckers Cause. Next, look out for frozen bank accounts. Next, look out for Executive Order 14,067, Section 2, digital bank accounts. People will be so distracted by the Christmas party and family season that they won't realize what the government is hitting them with this year. If you want to live in an open-air prison colony plus digital banking prison camps, come soon, coming soon, just do nothing and let the events happen. Let the digital, let them digitally freeze our bank accounts. Or you could move to Red China and get a taste of the system which is already in place. Issue two, Assembly Bill 2098 is censorship with the goal of furthering medical tyranny and violates the First Amendment to the US Constitution. Californian Nazi Newsom on Friday signed a bill that subjects the state's doctors to discipline, including the suspension of their medical licenses for sharing misinformation or disinformation about COVID-19 with their patients. The vaccine cult is fostering a mass delusion. The official narrative, doctors don't spread lies, they have opinions. We need public inquiry into these years-old physician gag orders. Even physicians don't know what's in the jab, they're just following FDA orders. Grand juries should study the unchecked power that is producing this challenge to democracy. A bill Newsom signed essentially criminalizes free speech by subjecting doctors who speak out against the COVID-19 narrative to penalties. It allows the state's medical board to revoke the licenses of any physician who expresses an opinion contrary to the faulty scientific consensus to the standard of care. come soon, coming soon, just do nothing and let the events happen. Let the digital, let them digitally freeze our bank accounts. Or you could move to red China and get a taste of the system which is already in place. Issue two, Assembly Bill 2098 is censorship with the goal of furthering medical tyranny and violates the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Californian Nazi Newsom on Friday signed a bill that subjects the state's doctors to discipline, including the suspension of their medical licenses for sharing misinformation or disinformation about COVID-19 with their patients. The vaccine cult is fostering a mass delusion. The official narrative, doctors don't spread lies, they have opinions. We need public inquiry into these years-old physician gag orders. Even physicians don't know what's in the jab. They're just following FDA orders. Grand juries should study the unchecked power that is producing this challenge to democracy. As a bill Newsom signed essentially criminalizes free speech by subjecting doctors who speak out against the COVID-19 narrative to penalties. It allows the state's medical board to revoke the licenses of any physician who expresses an opinion contrary to the faulty scientific consensus to the standard of care. Just literally starts to outlaw opinions of physicians. This is Assembly Bill 2098. You guys ought to figure this out. To pretend there is a scientific consensus on a novel disease and a novel gene therapy is absurd. Scientists and philosophers agree that science advances by refutation and falsification and by observation and experimentation. Instead, we're getting, you know, tyranny out of Sacramento. When the Nazis came to power in 1933, the German constitution guaranteed freedom of speech and freedom of the press. Through laws, the Nazi abolished these civil rights and destroyed German democracy.
Do we have any more speakers?
No further speakers.
Thank you, Bill. How far are city managers' report, which will be, oh, oh, yeah, that's right. Can you, city manager, answer some of the public comment concerns or comments?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. I'll certainly try to respond really feed to some of the comments and suggestions that were made. First, Lisa Mayo, thank you for being here tonight and for sharing with us your work on domestic violence. I know it's an important issue in this community and in all communities now. And during the COVID shutdown, it became a crime, which was much more frequent and apparent and distressing to us all. It's an aspect of community wellness and health that we don't talk about enough. So I appreciate you highlighting it and thank you for the invitation to the movie showing. To President Perez and the entire members of our fire department, thank you all for being here tonight. Our negotiations this year were frequent. I think we met six or seven times and we had some good and honest and frank conversation in that table. And the result is what's on your agenda with the recommendation for approval tonight. And we're honored to be served by these men and women and proud that we have with this contract approval tonight in anticipation of your vote, we will have again all of our nine labor unions under multi-year contracts. So it's a point of pride for us. And we don't get to say thank you often enough in person to our fire department members. Thank you all for your service. George Ogden talked about a number of issues, including code enforcement, the enhancement of an attractive community and positive image for the city of West Covina is a goal in which all of us have a stake. And if we need to do a better job of reaching out to the people that have some unbeautiful, trashcans or whatever, if there's a way we can help with them, with city staff or corporately with the Athens, we'll follow up on your suggestion, Mayor, that we try and get the word out about the availability of help services when they're needed. People that have financial hardship, I know there are very many groups in this town that would be happy to step in in some of those situations. I'll follow up with you directly. Mr. Robinson again spoke about COVID vaccinations. I continue to urge everyone to get their medical advice regarding the COVID pandemic from a medical doctor and to be vaccinated if they want to follow the science. I think that's all I have this evening. Thank you so much.
And Councilman Wu, you have a question?
Yeah, I want to follow our resident, George Ogden, regarding the issue. I don't think our code enforcement officer find people right away, right?
No, sir.
Okay, so we need to help, okay, for example, to issue he mentioned, one is 83-years-old lady. We have give them the permit fee for $380. Maybe we can look into and see what we can help them. Help her to something if some people, senior, they have an issue, maybe city can look into. We have a donation or something to help her out. Okay, and regarding the, okay, trashcan, the $40, okay, that I think our code enforcement should be maybe like he said, will help to pull the trash and leave a note, say please leave, okay, the trash inside the next day. So with that, I think we'll be helping the people to accept, to keep our city nice and clean with something to solve approach. And rather than just give them the fire, send them a notice, I think this way they will be more appreciate how can we help each other. Okay, so maybe you can look into, it's possible to have our code enforcement department to train the staff, see something they can do, okay, to help our resident at the same time keep our city, okay, and what people want and a proud, clean and beautiful city.
Point, Councilman Tabataba.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, on the same issue, I've had several residents reach out as well about the way they've been approached by code enforcement. And so I think if we can reemphasize that we are in the service industry and we are public servants, and if we can keep that front of mind, I understand, right, when you're enforcing some of our codes, right, the idea is we have them in place, right, to keep our city beautiful, to keep people safe. But also, right, we're not in the, in the job of, you know, punishing people. We're in the job of serving them and making sure that they understand. I know when I first moved to West Covina, you know, they don't give you a packet on, well, what are the rules for trashcans and things like that? You kind of learn by just, you know, talking to neighbors and things like that. And so if our code enforcement also understands that, that most people are unaware that they're even violating rules, and again, just maybe coming forward with a more educational approach and service approach so that, I think, going forward, if we could, again, just emphasize that with our staff. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I've had the experience of having neighbors complain about a letter that maybe our code enforcement has given them. And so there's warnings. I don't think our code enforcement, you know, forces these $40 fines on them on the first, you know, incident they have. So I know that they do educate them and they give them a letter and they still give them time. So, you know, we got to look at each case differently, I think, and maybe this is just an isolated case where they did this because I don't think our code enforcement is, you know, bad out there. I don't think they're trying to do us any damage. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem, Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
With code enforcement, from my understanding, is their mission is to correct and rectify the situation. They're not there to, they give multiple chances, multiple warnings. I don't even think they've really collected any fines unless it's, they're just, I know we had one business that just totally ignored them and let it be, but they're there to give multiple warnings, multiple chances. I actually had on my street, they did, I guess they drove through, and that was the month that I didn't have a gardener. And so the front of the sidewalk, the grass went through and it covered the numbering sign along with the others and myself and the others, they all received a letter. So I've received a letter, took care of it, not a problem. But I just wanted to also mention that we do have our CDBG program that we can inform all the residents of mandatory repairs that are needed, such as roofing or any housing. We have that zero interest where they can utilize to cover the costs so that they don't have to pay. So if we can, I'm hoping that code enforcement also is aware of this so that they can share this, but I think they said they did. But I just want to make sure that that is being informed with all the residents on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Councilman Wu.
Yeah, okay, quickly, okay. I think, okay, totally agree with what is the role of our code enforcement, okay, to make sure our city is pretty and orderly, okay, and make sure it's safe with a building permit because some of the people build without permit, possible become hazardous, fire hazard, electrical issue, plumbing issue. So I think this is something that's needed. But at the same time, I have a request to how code enforcement not only enforce the resident property, I think they should enforce city property, too. Because city has our median or some public areas, okay, if they didn't do the job, okay, I think code enforcement should give city maybe a ticket or something to make sure, okay, that thing will be taken care of right away. So what I request is, what I need to do is we treat our resident and city property equally, okay? And so in that way, if you see the graffiti, code enforcement should let our public work to know it right away. So, and if they have a median, I saw some median, they haven't been, okay, taken care. They need to pursue and make sure city maintenance go over there, make sure it's nice and clean because people doesn't want to see the public area, it's horrible. And so we want to be kind of tight to screw in the city performance, too. So I think code enforcement job is driving around, not only finding the city problem, okay, find the resident problem, they have to find the city problem, too. And I prefer, okay, we have to look into our park, common public area, okay, our older, okay, median and older personnel, okay, walkway and to find the problem and improve the problem, okay, and improve the issue. So I think that is what code enforcement is about, not only for resident but also for the city. So I think this is a request, our code enforcement, since they have, what, full-time, right now we have, driving around all day and with each district, and each district should compete each other, okay, to make sure this district is nice and clean, okay, including the city property. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no further comments on that, so let's move on to our city manager's report.
Good evening again. I do have just a couple of brief items to report out tonight. First up, first slide here, we have a health and wellness fair, which is right around the corner now. I would encourage people to come. We're going to have, we, Sunday, free health screenings and a number of low-cost health screenings, immunizations will be available, a lot of community health and education classes about how to do health and cooking, we'll have some demonstrations, et cetera. We'll have some things of interest to children. If people want to come and participate, they'd be highly welcome. Wanted to report about a couple of capital projects that are underway right now. Just outside these chambers is a redo of the restrooms. We had some complaints here at council a couple of times about their really poor conditions. Anticipated on this is the end of this week. I was in there this morning just to talk to the workers and it looks, it's a nice crisp look. I wanted to make mention of the fact that we're going to be using the last of our change order authority under this year's pavement management contract with RJ Noble to tend to some streets that had fallen well below standard and were much needed. Our goal under our pavement management program, which was updated in 2020, is to get the entire street system to a numerical score of a 70. Most of these streets are in the range of a 50, which means they had failed. So starting next week, we're going to see some cold plating and then some cracked ceiling and then an inch and a half asphalt cap overlay on a number of streets south of Shadow Oak, east of Amar, Fox Lake, Hiltonia, Level Glen and Hedrow. And then that'll use the last $400,000 remaining authority under this year's paving contract. I also think it's time for us to take another look at our pavement management program generally. So I've asked city engineering to brush that up and we'll return to council with another review of that so we can rightly, again, reprioritize for next year's street paving programs. Another capital project I wanted to mention, this is just a snapshot from this afternoon about the restrooms at Cameron Park. This is our new template. We're going with standing seam metal roofs with hardy board siding with vandal-resistant fixtures inside. Cameron Park is about a month ahead of the same thing over at Walmarada with a different contractor. This contractor began his demolition and is further along because the other contractor didn't order his material soon enough and got caught up in supply chain stuff. But I like the look and I think we're going to begin to use this as a template for all of our park restrooms. I think it brings us into this century and I'm proud of that. Wanted to make mention of some opportunities we had working with one of our local utility providers. They're not a city contractor, but they do operate under the authority of the California Public Utilities Commission. This is some trenching that has been done with Frontier and frankly, they got a little ahead of themselves and then fell behind, unacceptably behind in getting their permanent repairs made. And so this is just a good, bad example of some asphalt ramping. And we've been, we've been working really closely with them in the last couple of weeks and they've made some commitments to tend to all the things that they've lagged and to do a much better job of the traffic control measures, to follow the watch manual. We had some construction workers just walking down streets, pulling wire and pull tape without benefit of traffic control. We want, we want them to follow approved plans, we want them to work safely. So they've also agreed to step up the permanent repairs and we're working with them on a list of streets that we think they've damaged sufficient that they're going to owe us some slurry seals. So we'll keep on that. We had our annual Fire Prevention Week open house last Saturday. We had a really good public turnout and the department did a good job of putting its best face forward. And I'd like to thank them for all the work that went into that community event that was nicely done. Coming up is a couple of community events celebrating Halloween on Saturday, October 29th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the historic downtown West Covina, South Glendora Avenue area. And then the Kiwanis Club is presenting Cartoba Fest, which is a trunk-or-treat thing on the 15th of October. We have a municipal election this fall. I think the people that come to these meetings are generally aware of that. This Thursday in these chambers, the League of Women Voters is going to be hosting a candidate's forum. We are providing the facility, we're providing the video, we're providing the normal police presence, but they are running it and we'll staff it appropriately, which means we'll be in the background to make sure everything goes off without a hitch. That's this Thursday, 6:45 to 9:00. This is our calendar of the municipal election. At the next meeting, we'll announce the vote centers, which will be open by the end of the month. I think that's all I've got this evening. Thank you very much.
Dave? And one more, one more point regarding the code enforcement issues. We could put that in the Discover as well to inform our residents of available services from Athens and also maybe the top five or top 10 code enforcement issues that could be easily remedied.
Certainly. Well, I've heard all your comments tonight and your suggestions. I know we do try to get voluntary compliance. That's always our first approach and compliance is our goal. We try not to be jackbooted thugs as we go about that business, but our code enforcement staff is working pretty hard. And they need to also inform management about problems in city facilities, well, they need to have their heads on a swivel when they're out and about. So we'll do a job of marketing through the Discover, as you suggest as well.
Thank you. Councilman Wu?
Yeah, okay, I want to follow through, okay, Mayor Castellano, regarding the Discover West Covina. Okay, we need to show, okay, okay, information, including the Athens discount for senior, okay, and water, okay, and because water bill, right now it's like three times. I cannot believe in my water bill, I got a heart attack. Okay, so, so they like become very expensive and something to, okay, and the utility of power, Edison, okay, something, too. So we need to provide information for the senior fixed income and they have a number to apply, okay, to get a discount because with this inflation, which is utility go up so high, I think a lot of people have a really issue struggling. Okay, so we need to provide information, the phone number, and then so they can call in. I know Athens and the water and the power, okay, gas, I think they all have a senior discount program. So give, provide the phone number and hopefully all that, okay, can help our fixed income senior to apply.
Yep. Thank you for that.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to consent calendar, we've got five items today. Would anyone like to pull anything? All right, cool. So seeing no one wants to pull, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items? One?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Before I roll call, I have an ordinance titled to read into the record. Ordinance number 2501, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending Article 7, purchases and sales of Chapter 2, administration of the West Covina Municipal Code. I have a motion by Councilmember Tabataba and a second by Councilwoman Lopez-Viado. Councilmember Tabataba?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Castellanos?
Aye. All five items pass 5-0. Thank you. And I think, Councilman Wu, did you want to say something?
Yeah, okay, really quick. I want to thank, okay, all the union, nine-union group and to put our contract together, set both sides, have a meeting in the mind, okay. I know it's always a difficult task, okay, and I've been sitting over here since end of 2015 and till 2018, I went through hell about the previous administration and I cannot say how appreciate, okay, I am tonight and to see all this unity with all the labor group because... Because you must have a happy staff, then you have a happy city, then you have a happy resident. So because that is how we together and everybody work together and you have to take care of your staff. And so I want to thank, okay, and tonight, the FFA and put this contract together, okay, I know it's very difficult because always have two side and on our side, we want to protect taxpayer, on your side, you want to take care of your family. So we want to be fair, but again, again, thank you so much for this. I want to thank the staff, Helen, okay, I know with your, you're right there and our, okay, HR manager, Lisa, okay, I want to thank both of you and all the staff and of course, city manager, okay, and to put this together and working negotiate with our FFA, okay, your leadership, okay, with Terry and Carlos and, and all the board members to put this together. And this is the, okay, best thing I ever seen for sitting over here for, like this, like we are all Kombaya, okay, and you know, to work with a labor group, this is very difficult and without this unity and the city cannot move forward. And now with all this labor group, put it together with a three-year contract and we will set free, at the same time with your contribution for your retirement, the city future will be much more safer, financially much more healthier, okay. And I want to thank you to willingness, okay, to pitch in and for your retirement. And I'm going to shut up, okay, I'm going to, I know, otherwise I will forever, ever to thank you like never end. But thank, but thank, I know, but my time, my time's up, okay, but thank you so much, I really appreciate, good job, okay.
Thank you, Tony. Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
I was just going to say, thank you for being here all tonight. When I first got in, I do remember having to meet with you and the city staff and the tension, the tension and morale was at its all lowest with just police, fire, just every, everyone in the city. And this is the first time, and you're not kidding when you said many years to get, you know, all the contracts in place. So I want to thank both sides, city and fire, the unions to get together and meet in the middle, compromise and get this going. So I do appreciate that and thank you again for all that you do and I'm glad that staff morale is at the highest with everyone in the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Any, any more comments? Well, I'll say a few words. We've come a long way these last four years. I want to thank all of our FFA members who are here and our city staff and everyone in this room for doing everything that's occurred these last four years to make the city a better place. We're on a good path and I know my colleagues will keep it going in the right direction. Thank you. And, well, that's it for consent calendar, so let's move on to departmental regular matters. Item number six is consideration of dialer ride service area.
Hi, good evening. This report was requested at the September 20th city council meeting and it's a consideration of the dialer ride service area. Dialer rides are shared transportation for eligible West Covina residents. Eligibility is aged 55 and over and persons with disabilities. Service operates Monday through Friday and part-time on Sunday. Fares $0.50 each way. Current service area allows for, for travel within the city limits and three miles beyond for medical reasons. And put a survey of the local, of local cities together to give you an idea of what other cities are doing if you want to consider that. And so just recommend that you provide some direction relative to the service area as well as the, the Uber program was, the service area was, we use the dialer ride as a basis for that. So ask that you consider revising both of those service areas for consistencies. Concludes my report. Now, available for questions, we have representatives from MV as well, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have any questions for Kelly from the council? No? Okay.
So we are going to change it, okay, the dial ride from the three-mile ready rather than, okay, but limitation of the city, right?
If that's the council's wish, yes.
Yeah, so, so, and were you talking about on the Uber? So I think last time we already approved the Uber 65 years and older, they can order with $20, they pay $3 and anything. So I think that was already approved. And so tonight, we only talk about the dial ride, right?
The, the service areas are, are similar. The, for the Uber program as well as the dialer ride program, we said you can travel within the city and just beyond the city, three miles for medical reasons. So both of those programs have the similar service area and criteria regarding that geographic restriction, so just.
No, I, I think we want to, I want to, I want to make a motion to remove the medical only, it should be based on the distance and to have people to can have a service. So for example, dial ride with people with wheelchair, if they want to go to supermarket and then they live in the border, they can just go across, okay, border to get service. Okay, and for Uber, okay, anything, $20, we pay up to $20. Anything more than $20, they pay $3 and anything about $20, they have to pay.
We covered it, right?
Yeah, so we.
So for this, Kelly, are you looking for a number, a hard number, like five miles or six?
Right, as well as the restriction. If there's no restriction, that's fine too. Currently, it's three miles for medical only. You want to say three miles for any reason outside of city, city limits, that's.
Yeah, I think I'm cool with that. I'm cool with no, no limit and.
No limit.
Should we say six, should we say six miles?
For dial ride, I think three miles should be.
Well, right now, it's currently three.
Three, but, but currently is city limit.
Okay, so keep it at three.
Keep it at three, let's see how it goes.
Not just within the city then?
Correct.
Not limited to medical.
Because a lot of people living, for example.
Right, like on the border or something.
Border or La Pointe border or Bowen Park or, okay, Warner border or county border.
I think maybe we should do four miles or five, because three, three might be limiting.
Will that be a cost factor? Will be running out the money? Okay, I just want to make sure we don't over, I, I can, we can expand as much as we can, but I want.
No, I get your, we don't want to go overboard, but.
We don't want to go.
Three might still be limiting, I mean, maybe four.
Will that be an issue?
The cost is based on, it's an hourly rate, so.
It's not so much.
The impact would be having a vehicle potentially beyond a service area, not being able to get back, you know, impacting service in that fashion.
Question. If you go, let's say three mile, they go to pick up the grocery, okay, and then three mile back, then it's a six mile already, right, or just a two trip?
Yeah, we're not.
You send them, you cannot be one trip, how can, how can they come back?
Oh, they, they can come back. We're just saying the geographic, geographic restriction, that they can go out as far as three miles beyond the city limit.
Correct. That, that we are going to change, but how about when they come back? So one trip, three mile to go to the destination?
He's asking if the three is inclusive of the round trip.
Because you have to be around.
Meaning 1.5 each way? Or if, or is it three each way? Each way.
Each way.
So how would they do it? So I have to make a two trip, make a two order, please carry. Okay, I'm going to make a, okay, book my trip as a senior or.
Yeah, I think that's how it's done currently. They, they both ahead of time.
Both, okay, maybe 2:00 o'clock, they can get a car in the, outside the supermarket, then they can pick them up and then go home. Am I right? Am I right?
Could you, I'm sorry, can you help me with that?
Oh, would you please come up? So no wonder you cannot answer, okay, okay, so I'm just, I would think about, you know, everything. Sorry, Carrie. Okay, I don't know, we have a professional over here. Yeah, we need your answer. And, and another thing is a cost factor, okay, how much will cost us? And does it make sense or not? Yeah, go ahead.
So the cost factor, I think Kelly can speak on that, but it wouldn't add anything or take anything away because, like you said, it's hourly. But per trip, if we take you outside of the service area, be it four, six miles, we bring you back. So any reservation made, we, if we take you out, we bring you back. We don't leave anyone out. I think what Kelly's trying to say is.
Excuse me, I have a question here. If you're going to take the person back and you charge per hour, okay, hour rate, then would they accumulate because they go inside two, three hours, then you charging?
Oh, no, no. So each trip is, is booked separately?
Okay, got it.
And so when the rider calls in, they say, I'm going to the market, can you pick me up at 9:00? We say, sure, 9:15, we have, we negotiate.
Great.
And then they'll say, I need a return trip. I'm going to be about an hour at the store, pharmacy, whatever. And we book the return trip. Then we go back out and bring them back.
Good. So basically, we don't have a, a bus, okay, idling, waiting for, that's totally waste of.
No, the, the trips are booked currently seven days out and we have a router that dispatches and routes and share rides if possible so that we can.
Yeah.
Make them efficient. That won't ever idle, no.
Exactly. And, and so, so mileage won't, won't be an issue for cost factor based on what you say. So right now, currently, three mile and we want to remove the medical only because a lot of people living on, West Covina is huge, we have a lot of, and people living.
We have had some dispatch issues where someone will call in and say, well, I live right at the border and the food for less is right across the street.
Correct.
You know, and, and those types of things with the medical. So, I mean, it would be very convenient for ridership.
I, I think so. I think, because not everybody using the medical, maybe once a month, but everybody want to pick up their grocery or doing some other chore of their life. And I think we need it, okay, so remove the medical only and the, but do we need to extend the three mile?
Well, yeah, and the other consideration too would be, are we competing with our shop local if we remove?
Quite true, quite true. So we, let's do this, let's keep this three mile, but without any restriction, okay, it's based on the distance, not based on the medical need. So in that way, we extend the people living on the border. So we, then we, we evaluate, okay, and, and I think this is a much better step by step rather than right away, too much drastic change. So right now, we're just changing for people can utilize, okay, and especially people live on the border, okay, and they're struggling, okay. So hopefully, this one can help them to move around. Make sense?
Yep. Councilman Tabatabai?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, you, you brought up the, the point I, I wanted to bring up, which I do have an issue with removing the, just medical because it, it does, we are then, in essence, subsidizing people to go outside the city and spend their money, not in West Covina. And so, you know, I, I think that we want to incentivize people to shop within the city. And so if we're going to subsidize, we're going to use our tax, tax money to, to give people rides, we want them to ride to, because even if you go to the grocery store, you may shop at that local little restaurant, maybe you buy a coffee from the coffee shop, maybe you, you know, so we want to keep them within West Covina to shop. So I, I don't, I don't think it is a good idea to encourage people to go and shop outside the city by giving them this incentive and then to subsidize it. I think it goes against what, what we're trying to do, which is to get people to shop inside West Covina. So I, I'm okay with extending the radius for the medical because I think that's important, but I am not for opening it up beyond that, yes. Thank you.
Councilman Wu?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with your point, but I want to have a, people have a choice, okay? The people need to have a choice, okay, to decide where they want to shop, okay? And so for some senior, maybe some this closer to in the West Covina doesn't have the thing he or she need. So I think we should open this up, okay, especially for so many population live on the border, okay, they maybe will go to, not necessarily just grocery shopping, maybe some other issue they need to do, visit their friend, okay, they want to go to see, okay, some their retirement home friend to go over there to hang out. So it's not necessarily only the shopping, but, but I think we should give a try, okay, remove the medical and then we see how it goes, okay? Because we want the convenience for our senior and the people in need. It's not that many of people, but we shouldn't restrict their freedom just because we want to force them to shop, okay, nearby West Covina. And the West Covina order, they maybe can do deliver, okay, to their home. They don't even have to go to the supermarket. So, so this is three mile is for them to have a freedom, okay, with their wheelchair, they can go to the, maybe the nearby park or something and they went to want to have a walk. I think you should give them the convenience rather than restrict them like before. Because that is what my survey from the senior, they told me they not qualify, okay, due to they only go into the city limit. That's why I think based on this survey, a lot of senior, they want to have a freedom. And that's what we're here for, to create, create a benefit for our senior resident have a freedom to move around.
Got you. Councilman Tabatabai?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, the issue when we're talking about freedom is, you know, you, you have the freedom to, to go and shop where you want when you're using your own money to, to pay for that transportation. Now, when you're using the taxpayer's money to fund that, well, then you don't, you don't get that freedom of choice because you're asking the taxpayer to subsidize your movement. And so if we're going to use taxpayer money, we should use that money for the benefit of, of the city and the benefit of the taxpayer. So if we're going to spend revenue with shopping and things like that, then we, we really need to incentivize shopping, shopping local. Again, you know, yes, we, we do have freedom of choice, but that's, that's a freedom when you're using your own resources. When you, when you're using government resources, then your choices become limited because you have to think about the, again, the, the, the community, the, the taxpayer who's subsidizing it, right? Because that, that's our job. Our job is to make sure that we're, we're doing our fiduciary duty to the community, not necessarily to the individual. And, and so, again, this, this is why I have an issue with, with that.
I think both your points are clear and you both make very good points. Now let's hear from other, other council members. Mayor Protem Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Tabatabai. I think that we should allow our residents to be able to go and get medical care, maybe, maybe make that unlimited. But I do believe that if we're going to be providing rights to go shopping, they should shop in our city. Is there any way that we can limit that or restrict that or do something about that to control that? Is there anything we can do about that? I mean, they can go outside, but.
Yeah, we could decide however we want right now, for sure. Good, good point. Thank you for adding. Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Same here. I mean, we say shop, play, live in West Covina instead of going to another park at another city. I mean, we have it here, utilize everything of West Covina. The only thing that I, I could think of with the border is, let's say you do have family that is, you know, within a two mile that helps you mentally, physically, and you need that. That's the only, with medical and if that, the friend visit falls in that line of like assistance and all that, then I would say that is okay to travel to like go to a, a family member's home or to get to that location to be able to be taken care of. But then that again falls under the medical terms, whether it's your mental health, physical health or any of that. So that I would say if, the term medical trips only what that is classified under because that also helps with the three-mile radius outside if, because sometimes they can't afford a doctor, but they have a friend or, you know, a salvador or, you know, kind of that type of deal where they, they take care of them and that's in the local area. So that's the only thing, I would like to put that as an implementation. But yes, shopping, playing, all that stuff, and we are covering those costs. We like it in here and, and if they want to see improvements that the other city has that we don't have, please, by all means, let us know so we can improve that aspect so that West Covina can, can continue to be a great place to live, shop, play, et cetera. Thank you.
Councilman Wu?
I think it's all good point, okay, but again, I think the government, okay, benefit, okay, we, what want to do is service our resident. And we're talking about the resident have a, is a senior or disability, need a wheelchair access. So we want to encourage them to go out, okay, no matter where they want to go, okay? We want to think about their mental health and they don't confine in their apartment or in their, in their place. So, so to restrict people, okay, just for some benefit for the city, that tiny little money is very selfish, what I see. What I see is what we need to do is for the senior and been working so long for the, our community, now they retire, some of them disability, why can't we give them a slack about benefit for them to have a, okay, and a freedom to move around with this wheelchair access of, okay, mobility rather than just thinking about making a little bit sales tax? Sales tax, we only get one. Sales tax, we only get one penny per dollar. So what, the benefit for all these healthy residents, senior, have a better life at the end of their, the, 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 leaving our cities, to have a freedom. So what I'm saying is, how can we help them to easier to move around, okay? I think this is more important than how we want to force them to only in the West Covina, okay? So, so that is how, what I survey with the seniors to help them, okay? Especially because the dial ride is about, they have a, okay, and, uh, access for the handicap. And the most of people using this, they have to use, use the wheelchair. So anyway, this is, uh, okay, I think, based on the survey, I'm the shop local guy. I want people shop local. But for all those seniors, I really want them to have a freedom, have their choice in the end of their life, have a much easier to move around, okay? And to see them, and can I use the dial ride because of limitation, is very sad. So otherwise, why I should do this, okay, try to study this thing, because there's a need, it's over there. So anyway, uh, that's why I still prefer, okay, give them, see how it goes. Let the three mile, without any restriction, see how many people apply, and let's see the number, okay? And see where they go, okay? And I think in that way, I think we can benefit more of helping our senior resident.
And?
Can I get the stats of what the numbers look like, of how many actually use for medical purposes versus how many actually use for other purposes, such as shopping or visit? Because I know the three mile is not only restricted to the three mile radius where they live, it's the whole West Covina. So obviously, one end of West Covina to the other is gonna be more than three miles. But I, do we have that information? I'm just curious on what those stats look like.
I don't have it, and I don't know that MV tracks, uh, the purpose of trips.
Can you come to my, so that they could hear you?
We would have the information for you. We have a current system that we use that can actually filter where we pick up and where we drop off. Um, so we could probably get that to you guys within about a week or so.
Well, we look forward to that. And, uh, yeah, and I think we should do that going forward. Um, you know, you heard the discussion, a lot of great points, but my, my comment will be, um, despite both sides, I, I still think, um, allowing our residents to go outside the boundaries for any reason is better than empty ghost buses, as you've all heard me say a dozen times. Um, so, yeah, if we, if you could track that for us, that will keep pushing us towards a better system for our residents, regardless of what that may be, whether it's dial ride, the, the transit lines, or Uber, or any variation of all of the above.
Well, this one, I know it's a particular dial ride, and I, I have experience with this, because, uh, many years ago, I had to assist my grandmother getting this dial a ride. So the only thing, what I didn't like about dial ride, like you mentioned earlier, you have to book it seven days prior, that I don't like, and I'd like to see that changed, because not everybody can plan that advance. And sometimes you're in a situation where you, you are sick, and you need to call the doctor, and, you know, you need to go in the next day. So the, I would like to see that seven days booked in advance to be altered. Um, I know that dial ride, this is popular, it's, this dial ride is never an empty, because it's always packed, and it's, it's utilized to the fullest capacity. So that I already know, and, and I know, well, I know it's full. So even extending it to three miles, that takes that dial a ride away from another senior who needs it. Uh, because from that experience, I think one time I called him, like, we need that, and like, well, unless someone cancels, and I'm like, crap.
Well, the, and the point I'm making is, it, it comes from the same bucket of dollars. So if we've got empty ghost buses pulling from that bucket...
Put more on the dial a ride.
Exactly.
And that's fine.
And even for, like, the point you make, if they're not wheelchair bound, that's where Uber is on demand.
Yeah. And, um, and then I, I'd also like to see, like, does, medical trips, does that include, um, massages, acupuncture, um, you know, psychological health? I mean, does that all fall under medical, or is it medical just, just doctors, strictly hospitals and doctor's office?
Our staff does not question the right. The writer calls and say, says they have a medical trip. Um, normally, it's to medical buildings outside, like the Kaiser, um, those types of buildings. Um, but we, we don't question the writer. They tell us where they're going, if it's a medical trip.
And we, and we as a body could say, we, we make that rule up right now, that, that's all acceptable.
That's what I'd like to see. I mean, if they, uh, there are those who would like to take their medical in a holistic approach. So if the holistic is, yeah.
Let's do that, I, I agree.
We respect the ridership's privacy, and if they say it's medical, it's medical.
Okay.
Yeah, and if any, I mean, yeah, so I don't think we need to do the full delineation of all the bullet points. But, yeah, I agree that, that things like acupuncture, massages, things like that would fall under.
But I, I would like to see, um, the expansion of three mile to five mile when it comes to medical, because sometimes, when you're Yelping, that you don't have the best.
Yeah.
Sometimes within your city or nearby, you need to expand if it's, uh, with any holistic approaches or any medical. So, yeah.
Councilman Tabataba?
Thank you. Uh, just for clarification, within the city, there, there is no, no mileage, right? So if, if I'm going from one side of West Covina to the other side, and it's a seven mile, that's fine, right?
Correct.
Yes, okay, so, just, just to, to be clear. Um, so, uh, if anyone wants to, right, do any type of shopping within the city, they don't have to worry about no three mile, or five mile.
Current rules, I mean, council, this returned your direction from last meeting. We started, started this conversation, we're continuing it tonight. But within the city, they can go for any purpose, within the city limits. The current rules just say the service area extends three miles beyond the border for medical trips only. So if you want to amend that, as the suggestion was most recently made.
I have a question for you.
Good.
Okay, and because I, I heard about so many people, they say, when they apply dial ride, they have been declined. So why is the qualification for people to apply, okay? And then, and now in that, okay, I've talked to many seniors, they're talking about, they cannot use a dial ride because they're not qualified, and because this is outside the city boundary. So, so, and that is the issue, what I collect, and, okay, and, uh, because when you go to a medical, and you have to go to a medical building, okay? Otherwise, they don't, they're not gonna take you. So what I'm saying, again, again, you restrict the senior or the people disable their right to move around, okay? And then that's why, if it's three mile, we should remove, okay? And, uh, because the restriction for medical, just like you say, we let them to use, utilize, let them move around, okay? And in the name of shop local, okay? I think just to restrict the senior to utilize this dial ride, because there's so many people having declined by you, okay? Your agency. So can you give us number, what to apply, and a what's qualification? And how can we help those people, okay? Especially they have no family, and to take them around, okay? And we can utilize this service to help them.
Not a problem. Actually, we don't do the qualifications for dial ride in the city of West Covina, the, um...
Yeah, the, the eligibility is only age-based or physical disability. It's fifty-five years and older, or you have a physical disability.
But Kelly, why I receive so many complaint regarding, they have a hard time to, they not qualify, but they over sixty-five? Okay, so, so, so maybe we need to have people to apply, and to, to see what's the issue they have. Because really, they're talking about, okay, the disqualification about that, when they want to apply. Yes, go ahead.
We've actually gone, gone out to, um, senior homes and different residences to try to help them to apply ourselves, because we were trying to get the ridership up for your instruction.
Thank you.
And, um...
That's what you want.
Yeah, we have. We've gone to markets, we've, we've done a lot. And, um, we haven't had anyone really say they haven't qualified, because it's, the eligibility is really easy to get on the service.
Maybe we could help those.
Yeah.
Next time, I'm going to give you all, all the person complaint to me, I gave you the information to Kelly.
Please.
I think Kelly, you know, we talked to a couple of senior, they told me, they even showed me your recording message regarding the Uber issue, okay? And hopefully, you can help that senior lady.
Yes.
To, to, uh, you, to, to sign up, okay? Because now them using the smartphone, smartphone.
Right.
Just to use the landline, the senior.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe we can help them. Again, again, the government job is helping people. Now, we're here to help the people, okay? Let they can move around, using the transportation, that provided for this purpose.
Yeah, we'll get you there, and you could do outreach, please.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll do, I mean, we've gone out to different locations.
Of course. Right. All right, thank you so much. We've had a lot of discussion. Anything to add?
I think with the denial, I think the denial is, uh, because you do have to show proof of residency, right?
Yes.
I think that's, and they probably don't wanna, you know, show the paperwork, or they, but I know you have to, it's not just fifty-five and over, but proof of residency.
Right.
And if they don't have...
No, they, they, they're the long time resident deep in West Covina. I don't know what's the issue.
Well, then, I guess we can send the email and find out.
I think we don't second guess, let's find out what's the issue.
And then the second thing with quality of life, in regards to, if they go to these medical, um, medical trips, they don't necessarily have to just do their medical. If it's outside the city, they don't just have to do their medical and then, uh, get picked up right away, because they can schedule a pickup time. So if they're already outside the city, they can enjoy whatever is in the outside area, and then just get picked up from that same location. But...
Councilman Wu?
So what should we do tonight? Are we going to move motion, or should we wait for the information?
Whichever you like.
I'm okay with whatever you guys want.
For me, I'd like to, uh, move it where it's five miles outside the city for medical trips, and if we can get the definition of medical trips, um...
We could make that up.
Okay, well, I would like to, it's, uh, if whatever's considered, you're in the medical field, you can let us know. Like the holistic, or, you know, things that, that help you, that improve you mentally, physically, you know? Whether even it's just a massage, well, even though West Covina has a lot of massage places, but, you know?
We have?
Do tell.
No.
Or, you know what I mean? Or, um, any holistic, acupuncture, um, psychology, uh, talk therapy, or anything like that. I, I would like to make sure that is part of...
How about they, how about they visit their family in the border next city?
Um, and if we can, that one, I don't mind if it's a, a family.
But you are reading, you are...
But I mean, the purpose of this is...
Medical, there is a medical. If they go to see their family member in the...
Well, that's why, if, if the family member takes care of them, or does a lot of the things that they have to go there...
There's another senior, they don't drive, if they want to go there to hang out. So when you put a medical, you put medical, medical. It's quite all right, okay? And, uh, I'm going to do this, since we have this motion, okay? You have a motion already?
Mm-hmm.
Want a motion?
I'd like to motion the extension of the five miles, and, uh, adding the additional things that fall under the medical umbrella. Okay, it dies.
Second.
Oh, second, okay, never mind.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado to amend the miles to five miles outside of the city of West Covina for medical purposes, and a second by Councilmember Tabataba.
And we agree that that's the broad definition of medical, correct?
It'll be a broad definition.
And, and were you also including what you, what was just discussed, uh, seeing friends and family outside? To include that as part of...
How could you define?
Right, it's...
Well, if, if...
No, even possible, medical is medical.
Gray area.
Medical.
She, she says medical is medical.
All right, then, medical, limited to medical. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tabataba?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
No.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz? Mayor Costelanos?
Aye.
Item passes four one.
Okay, and we'll still expect the, the data, um, as soon as you can get it for us, and ongoing. That way, we could, you know, continue to make choices based on how it's being used.
And, and with the data itself, um, obviously, later, we can change that based on need and stuff, so that... But from what, from my experience, and from what I remember, that dial a ride particularly is heavy usage. Thank you.
Thank you. And, all right, good discussion there. I think, as, as I've mentioned before, we all want to use these dollars to the best of their ability. And are there any council member reports, requests, or comments? Councilman Tabataba?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I actually do have a request, um, and Kelly, that, that you're here. I know one of my big concerns with, with Uber was the fact that we, we have no control of the fare and, and the algorithm that, that they use. And, um, one of the things that is, is a, a big concern is, as, as we increase demand, because we're subsidizing the Uber, uh, their surge pricing. So people who don't get the subsidy are also gonna end up paying more. So is, is it possible that, that, that we can, can look to another provider to also pilot with, to, to create the, the competition to control, control the pricing?
Like Lyft?
Like, like Lyft, yes.
I'm, I'm gonna second that and say, I think that's a great idea, because it continues to serve the purpose of dropping the price for transportation for our residents, and it's what I've been pushing. So, um, yeah, you guys agree? Cool, and so, yeah, we could then give you direction to look at Lyft agreement as well, to bolster competition and provide more avenues for our residents. Cool, any other reports? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, lately, um, I have been, and before, I've been getting some complaints from residents, where, um, people are walking their dogs, and, um, they're not picking up their poop. Very bad, very, very bad. So one of the things I'd like to see in our parks and possibly our paseos is, um, a doggy station, where we can have bags and a dispensary, so we can eliminate that problem, hopefully, if people comply. And, um, also, I think that we should put a fine if people do not comply, if we catch them, report them, something. At least show a sign where we can, um, install some sort of a fine if they don't pick up their dog poop.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Wu?
And I will, uh, hundred percent support your, okay, um, request. I think this is a good idea, because, and I walk in the shadow, I step on a lot of dog poo.
Yeah.
Okay, so people don't pick it up, and a lot of people complain, okay? And some of them maybe not dog poo, maybe coyote poo, okay? So, so, and our, I don't know, our maintenance, okay, our contractor, where they clean the walkway with a coyote poo, okay? So I think we need to, for sanitation reason, okay? I think need to be addressed, okay? I think this is a good idea to put some kind of a dispensary, and, and the posters, the fine, that if they don't pick up your, okay, dog poo or littering, okay, you will be fined, okay? Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea.
Good points. That's actually something that had been brought up to me previously, so I'm glad you guys both agree, and bring it up. Uh, David, yes?
Mayor, um, normally, when the council makes this service request, we bring them back on the next agenda. With this one, I'd just like to suggest, we're in the throes now of re-looking at our maintenance contracts, and I could add that task to those contracts, and you consider this suggestion as part of those contracts, if that's all right, rather than have it be a separate item. I'll just bring it back as part of those contracts.
Sure.
I'm not hearing anybody objecting.
I'm guessing.
And at the same time, maybe we have a estimation, if we want to put a dispensary and post a sign, how much it will cost the city?
Yeah.
Because we have sixteen parks, okay? And then we have a lot of common public walkway.
Yes.
So how we post, where we post, okay? And then, okay, where we put a dispensary of a dog poo or the station, and how much we, each one, how much it will cost us?
Okay.
Okay, I think we need to know the budget.
Right.
And then can we get a grant from Major A money, okay? This is park improvement, because sanitation, okay? And the possible is qualify, so maybe we can, rather than use the general fund.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Some sort of measure.
Yeah, I mean, it's a sanitary concern as well. You step on it, and it goes, and it spreads, um, whatever fecal manner, matter it is. But, uh, we should also, yeah, have the dog owners be responsible, because I don't want the residents or dog owners to get used to, oh, the city will pick it up, maintenance will pick it up. It's not really their job to, I know they, they pick it up, but it should be the responsible owner of the door, uh, walking. But yes, if you don't have the, uh, trash and stuff, that would be wonderful to add on.
Like, like this, we don't, there's no excuse. You have it there.
Yeah, exactly.
You don't even have to carry it with you. I do, I put it in my pockets, but, yeah, but at least we have something there, and they could at least start using it.
Sometimes they go twice.
I know.
You just had one bag.
I know. I, exactly. In pink.
Okay, and another issue, I think the frontier, the cable, okay, the, uh, phone company, they installed a fiber optic, and they really destroy our street. And then I saw the picture, I walk, and I see a lot of damage. Not only that, they graffiti, they color all the places. And I think we have to request, the city have to request frontier, okay, to basically put back to what is original, okay, the street look like? Because a lot of streets are very new. They destroy everything. They dig and they destroy the sidewalk and they even destroys when they jackhammer, they destroy somebody's, okay, and then the, okay, the car. So is I have so many complaint about the issue and that city city need to tell the resident, okay, and we are going to pursue, okay, this utility company to be responsible because the people calling frontier, the frontier told them, call your city. And how can that be if this is destroyed by them? Okay, and why city have to pick up the tab? We're not going to pay for taxpayers' money for what they doing for their benefit because they want to get business from their fiber optic, maybe cables, speed, this and that. But but what to do with us with all this destruction? So I think city really need to request and who approved this permit? City manager? Who approved this permit? Okay, and why did this supervise them to see what they have done? And why the resident didn't get notified about all these things? I don't even know, we have this massive of improvement based on what they say, but they dig because everything underground, but they they dig everybody in the front of their house, they dig everything, even including their driveway. So so I think we need to address this issue and since they are going to dig even more, then we need to make sure they comply. Okay, and less destruction, otherwise, okay, we are going to have a major complaint for our resident.
Yeah, Council, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Not only does it look ugly, but it, to me, it's a hazardous problem there for our pedestrians to be walking there because it looks all bumpy and stuff. I mean, they can hurt themselves and we don't need any lawsuits.
Yeah, that's that's true, risk management.
Yes.
Issue there. And also, it's not the first time this occurs. When Fios was first being rolled out, early 2000s, same issue was going on. And when my recollection is when the city called them out on it, they threw a tantrum and said, we're not doing any more files. And that was the case for many years. So, yeah, it's coming back to haunt us, so we definitely need a better path forward.
I, okay, okay, I think the question is the city know they're coming in with a venture like this. It's massive, massive, okay, meaning all the street, entire south side, all the road have been digging out. Okay, and so the city know this massive project, if this is come from TransTech, why they didn't notify us for our engineering or our building safety? Because this this should be kind of a let city know and the city maybe we say, we're not going to give you the permit unless you you are going to make our city nice and clean. And otherwise, why we allow them to do this? Because now, okay, we have a major issue, how to fix all this street and sidewalk. And the patching is bumpy, okay, and the sidewalk, they use tar on the cement, it's uneven. We are going to have a trip hazard. So what happened? Okay, why? Okay, nobody know about this. This is a, I think this is something TransTech have to tell us why they approve this with this massive project and nobody know or, okay, or the city know, but they don't know. But this is like mayor say, before 2000, they done this, but we shut it down because we worry about the destruction and the consequence, we're going to fix it. And now look at there, we done, okay, a lot of area. Okay, just let you know, I think we need to do, find out what's going on. And the most important thing have them to restore, okay, the what we have before, nice and clean the street, and they need to fix it.
Cool. Any other comments, concerns, or reports? Councilman Wu.
Okay, and quickly, okay, this is my my last statement. I'm going to taking stay here till midnight. Okay, okay, but, okay, I want to say this, okay, and and for me to walk on the shadow, okay, area, okay, and we see twenty years of obsolete of the hill, the hill, okay, the overgrown tree. And I think we cannot kick the can down to the road. I think we need to really address that issue, okay, to look all the our hill, the district, seven district. And I think we cleaned the azusa, the mosquito, the hill, now it's look clean. It look much nicer, but this is only one hill. And we maybe have, I don't know how many here, hundreds of them. Okay, and no size, south side, east side, west side, we have a lot of hill. I think city have to look into all the hill. Okay, not bend it, abandon it. I think we need to systematically clean all this fire hazard. Another tree having been trained for, I don't know, twenty, thirty years. And this gigantic tree, you could lift a tree next to people's home. I think that is extremely hazardous, okay? And this city really have to try to find a way. I know we put more task to our public work, but I think that is their job and the city job is keep our city safe and take out all the potential fiasco or catastrophe. So this is something, please, as this, okay, city manager to look into it and maybe can, okay, address to us how we going to do it, okay, systematically with all the, okay, and places. I have a confidence. I think this administration, they're very proactive to fix the thing. So we need you to get our public work with Roxanne's and help with Raul. I think we can do it, but just need to tell us, okay, when, okay, the schedule and to